Buenas, en half a day, Iminet Chantais Sais, Nalehas Latour in Guam is back. We are now on item 18, consideration of the daily file. And so we will begin with the third reading file. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 8-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blaz Jr., Telo T. Taidegui, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Joanne Brown. An act to add a new section 80.39.2D of Article II, Chapter 80, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to excluding individuals convicted of first or second degree criminal sexual conduct from the sentencing reductions of the Justice Safety Valve Act.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, pass. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, pass. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, pass. Speaker Terlahe.
I'm good.
Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, pass. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, pass. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, nay. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, pass, nay.
Bill number 8-36COR received nine ayes, six nays, and zero excused. Bill number 8-36 is duly passed by the body. Bill number 33-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 33-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor and Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning, introduced by Sabina Flores-Perez. An act to add a new section 5141N to Subarticle E. of Article II, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code annotated, and add a new section 1924 to Chapter 19 of Title I, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring government of Guam agencies to submit a procurement training compliance report to the Office of Public Accountability.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe.
I'm good.
Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Perez. I'm sorry, Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 33-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 33-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 45-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 45-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Jose Pito Terlahe, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Joe S. San Agustin, V. Anthony Ada, James C. Moylan. An act to amend Sections 25.15C and 25.20C, and add a new section 25.25C, all of Chapter 25, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to mandatory minimum sentences for repeat sexual offenders.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, pass. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye.
Bill number 45-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 45-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 52-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 52-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning, introduced by Sabina Flores-Perez. An act to repeal and reenact Section 5233 of Subarticle D., Article III, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code annotated, relative to disclosure of ownership, financial, and conflicts of interest under Guam procurement law.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 52-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 52-36 is duly passed by the body. Bill number 23-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 23-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Jose Pito Terlahe. An act to appropriate $81,744.51 from the fiscal year 2020 lapsed funds of the Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund, and up to $175,601.24 from the Safe Schools Initiative in fiscal year 2020 to the Guam Police Department.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 23-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 23-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 25-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 25-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, introduced by Jose Pito Terlahe, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. An act to amend Sections 63103.1A and F. of Article I, Chapter 63, Title 5, Guam Code annotated, relative to the stipend of the civilian volunteer conservation officer reservist at the Department of Agriculture.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 25-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 25-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 40-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 40-36COR, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Committee on Rules by request of E. Megahoggin Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act to add a new section 1512.5 to Article 5 of Chapter 1, Title 5, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the refunding of Government of Guam Business Privilege Tax Bonds Series 2011A, Government of Guam Business Privilege Tax Bonds Series 2012B, and Government of Guam Business Privilege Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2015D and related matters.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 40-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 40-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 57-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 57-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, introduced by Committee on Rules by request of E. Megahoggin Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act to appropriate $3,880,716 within the Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System fund from prior fiscal years to the Guam Fire Department for purposes established by Section 12304 of Article III, Chapter 12, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, governing use of the fund.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 57-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 57-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 58-36COR, please read the title.
Bill number 58-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, Talina Cruz Nelson, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahe, Mary Camacho Torres, Joanne Brown. An act to amend Section 2B of Public Law 34-112, relative to providing a five-year extension to the deadline for the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency to develop a functioning custom satellite inspection, holding, and secured sterile facility area.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 58-36COR received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 58-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 62-36LS, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 62-36LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Clinton E. Rogel, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Telo T. Taidegui, Jose Pito Terlahe. An act to amend Sections 43.10D and 43.70 of Article I, Chapter 43, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, and Section 63103 of Article I, Chapter 63, Title 5, Guam Code annotated, relative to penalties and restitution for theft of livestock or agricultural products.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, nay.
Bill number 62-36LS received 14 ayes, one nay, and zero excused. Bill number 62-36LS is duly passed by the body. Bill number 60-36LS, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 60-36LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahe, Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores-Perez, Frank Blaz Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Joe S. San Agustin, Christopher M. Duñez, Talina Cruz Nelson, James C. Moylan, Clinton E. Rogel, Jose Pito Terlahe. An act to amend Section 403H of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Inarahan to its name in the Tamora language, namely, Inalahan.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 60-36LS received 15 ayes, zero nays, and zero excused. Bill number 60-36LS is duly passed by the body. Resolution number 47-36LS, clerk, please read the title.
Resolution number 47-36LS, introduced by Therese M. Terlahe, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Talina Cruz Nelson, Sabina Flores-Perez, Joe S. San Agustin, Clinton E. Rogel, Jose Pito Terlahe, Christopher M. Duñez, Frank F. Blaz Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Telo T. Taidegui, Joanne Brown, James C. Moylan. Relative to authorizing Elias Latour in Guam to be represented in Guam Supreme Court case number CRQ 20-002, and assert the validity of the provisions of the Islyn Guam Emergency Health Powers Act at issue, and ultimately preserve the legislature's power granted by the Organic Act of Guam to enact laws necessary to protect the health, safety, and general well-being of the people of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blaz. Senator Blaz, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres.
Madam Speaker, I move that I be excused, point of order, as I was recused from participating.
Could you please state your reasons therefore?
Yes, Madam Speaker, stated previously, I wish to, I request that I be recused on the basis of my husband being a member of the judicial panel of the Supreme Court of Guam.
Pursuant to our standing rules, a member having assigned their reasons shall submit, we shall submit the question to Illes Latour in Guam. So, shall the senator, for the reasons assigned by the member, be excused from voting? All in favor, please raise your hand. Members excused. Senator Torres, excused. Bill number four, I mean, sorry, resolution number forty-seven dash thirty-six L S received fourteen ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Resolution number forty-seven dash thirty-six L S is duly adopted by the body. We are now on the voting file. On the nomination of Jessie U. Beletto to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Board of Social Work. All in favor, please raise your hand. Jessie U. Beletto received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Nonito V. Blas to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Nonito V. Blas received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Aldrin B. Kajigao to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. All in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Aldrin B. Kajigao received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jeremy N. C. Cepeda to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Jeremy N. Cepeda received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Rose P. Grino to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. All in favor, please raise your hand. Rose P. Grino received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Donna W. Kloppenberg to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Donna W. Kloppenberg received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ronald L. McNinch Jr., Ph.D., to serve as a member, upper-level management and private business representative of the Guam Education Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. I'll vote. I'm going to call the question one more time. All in favor of the nomination of Ronald L. McNinch Jr., Ph.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board, please raise your hand. Dr. Ronald L. McNinch received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of David Q. Mercado Jr. to serve as a member, public school teacher representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. All in favor, please raise your hand. David Q. Mercado Jr. received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Juan Carlo Espengelinin to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Juan Carlo Espengelinin received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Francisco B. Rabon to serve as a member, folk arts representative of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Francisco B. Rabon received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Michelle B. Santes to serve as Banking and Insurance Commissioner of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. All in favor, please raise your hand. Michelle B. Santes received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Catherine C. San Nicholas to serve as a member, nutritionist/clinical dietitian representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Catherine C. San Nicholas received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Chelsea Ting San Nicholas to serve as a member, community-at-large representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. All in favor, please raise your hand. Chelsea Ting San Nicholas received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Catherine T. E. Titanau to serve as a member, government classified service representative of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund Board of Trustees. All in favor, please raise your hand. Catherine T. E. Titanau received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of E. Magathoggin-Guahan, shall vetoed bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R be overridden? Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Telot T. Taidegui, Talina Cruz-Nelson, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. San Augustine, Sabina Flores-Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Joanne Brown. An act to amend Section six-one-one-zero-six-B of Article One, Chapter sixty-one, Division Two, Title Twenty-one, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing extensions of deadlines to submit reports or position statements to the Application Review Committee and an administrative fine for the director of a member agency of the Application Review Committee who fails to provide required reports or position statements on land use applications.
I'm going to repeat the question. So notwithstanding the objections of E. Magathoggin-Guahan, shall vetoed bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R be overridden? Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, pass. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay. Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Vetoed bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R received nine, or the, excuse me, the vote on the override of vetoed bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R received nine ayes, six nays. Vetoed bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-six C O R failed override and returns to our motions calendar. We've exhausted our voting file. We are, the floor is now open to a brief extension of remarks. There are none. Are there any announcements? There being none, Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Sis, this is Madam Speaker. I make a motion that we adjourn the session, subject to the call of the speaker.
On the motion to adjourn, is there any objection? No objection. We are adjourned, subject to the call of the speaker.